Paulo Pinto. Have a second?
Second.
Yes, sir.
Are the applicants here? I thought that was the way we left it, that they were going to come back and give us a decision on what they wanted to go with.
I have not seen anybody here.
I move that we postpone this to the next meeting of August the 4th with notification to the two parties.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say if you have a second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, new business. Uh, resolution of zoning map appropriation.
Right to discuss.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, is a motion made? Discussion? All those in favor, say if you have a second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who's first?
Me, Bones. I'm seeing maybe probably the same kind of issues we just had with this.
I have looked at it, and yes, I think after the discussion we just had, it's fair to say, uh, if the finance people have not looked at this, they probably should look at it. Now, I think the line item number did come from there that's in section one, but the section two is not from there. We have a second.
There's another version floating around.
Yeah. This is the new one. Saying where the funds are coming from, and I don't think that they have a conduct. In fact, I know they have, because we just had a deadline.
You know, this is another one of those that, you know, I'm totally supporting of what they're trying to do, but I think, again, I don't see the emergency here. I think we can defer this, at least until the next meeting. It's up to your counsel. Mr. Brown?
I move that we defer, uh, postpone this until the August 4th meeting.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say if you have a second.
Aye.
All right, now we get on to the new business. Uh, discussion of employee handbook.
Right to discuss discussion of the employee handbook.
Move for discussion.
Second.
All those in favor, say if you have a second.
Aye.
Ms. Bones?
Well, going through this, again, a lot of little things, a lot of little typos, a lot of just junk like that. But one of the most important things to me is... There's a part in here that says... Well, shoot. I thought I had it marked, but I can't find it right off here. One of the most important things to me in this was that we used to have an ordinance that said...
What is the date of your handbook that you're referring to? Oh, you're agreeing. You're agreeing the handbook, I suppose. Is there a date up the top?
October 8th, 2007.
Okay.
Okay. Chapter 2.48 in our Eureka Springs Municipal Code Book, Police Department. Um, 2.48.01 used to say that the council shall prescrib- prescribed by resolution or ordinance how many police officers we have. It said that it should be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. It said they shall receive such compensation as is determined by resolution or ordinance. And so, we find here Arkansas Code annotated 1452.1, 52... Arkansas Code annotated 1452.201 states, "City councils of cities of the first class shall, by general ordinance, direct the number of subordinate police officers to be appointed." So it says right here, the city council is supposed to be saying how many police officers we have. Now, it... According to the mayor, this book overrides the police... The enabling ordinance for the police department. Generally speaking, I think you can't make ordinances or laws or things that are less strict, you can only make ones that are more strict. So this one actually took the strictest away from this one, and actually took away what the council shall be doing. City councils of the first cities of the first class shall, and that means must, by general ordinance, direct the number of subordinate police officers to be appointed. So we're not doing that. I would like to see that reinstated, because I think we're living out of... Living out of bounds, doing the things that we shouldn't be doing. So, I would move to reestablish 2.48.01 according to 1452.201.
We established that by ordinance. Change it.
Excuse me?
The council in 19... 2007, by ordinance.
So I'm saying we change it back. I'm saying we change it back.
Okay.
So I would move to reestablish 2.48.01.
Discuss.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Uh, I realize that this was implemented by ordinance 2061 on October 8th, 2007. There's a personnel manual implemented by ordinance supersede city code that says we shall do something else.
Ms. Weaver?
It will, if there is a clause in it, it allows it to supersede, because it's a law. If it is passed as an ordinance, it is law. I don't know what that particular ordinance said from four years ago, but if it has full effect, it changes the code. If it has the normal clauses that they have.
Ms. Bones?
It has a conflict clause in it. If this is a correct option, this is not signed, but assuming that this is a correct option. So what are you trying to say to us? That it can supersede state law?
I'm not saying it supersedes state law. It can supersede the code.
Well, state law says...
That was part of the code.
1452.201, number of police officers. The city councils in cities of the first class shall, by general ordinance, direct the number of subordinate police officers to be appointed. We're out of compliance. We've been out of compliance. All the police officers that have been hired since this will have been effect have been illegally hired.
Aye, sure.
If I'm not mistaken, you're talking about approving the police officers and the pay, their budget, their pay. You do that every year. Every year, beginning of the year, Earl submits the person, the position, and the amount of pay to be approved by the council every year. And so, he does that. He's the... He gives you all the numbers and their pay rate, and the pay sales for them. And y'all prove that every year, first of the year. For that part, it's, um... Y'all do that.
What was that ordinance number again? I mean, that statute number?
1452.201. By general ordinance. It doesn't say budget ordinance, it says general ordinance.
Would you approve the budget?
But that's...
That's a budget ordinance. That's not a...
That's boards and civil service commissions.
Pardon?
That's with boards and civil service commissions.
Municipal police departments.
Go back to the header of that section.
Cities of the first class.
I'm not sure.
Subchapter 2, cities of the first class. You... Chapter 52, municipal police departments. Subchapter 2, cities of the first class. 1452.201, number of police officers. The city council of cities of first class shall, by general ordinance, direct the number of subordinate police officers to be appointed. It states very clearly.
Uh, I'm not sure. I tend to agree with budget actions being different than things required by code. However, uh, just for a matter of discussion and confirmation, at the last discussion that was held on this, uh, basically, the city side of it was presented as the personnel manual supersedes the code. There wasn't anything given about budget, because in the very first chapter, line and verse of the code, even without going back to the state code, says that, uh... "The police department shall be established, consist of the chief of police and such police officers as the council," shall by, described by resolution or ordinance, and I don't think that we were ever provided that based on a request that was given. So there is no ordinance in existence unless we can dig one out of the archives that says that we authorize a police department, uh... And how many officers? It says each member shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. I think that's all that was being asked.
Point of order.
What are we discussing here? I thought the topic was employee handbook. And suddenly, we're off on questioning ordinances and stuff regarding state law.
Have a... I'll give you a second.
Now, what if you will?
Yeah, I think if we're getting into departments within the police department where we are doing ordinances, I think you're probably right. I think we need to have... And I think it'd be best if we wait and be able to bring in the appropriate people to be able to help discuss this, who've been here longer than us, and be able to point this out and see where we are on this. If they are wrong and do want to change the ordinance, that's a good... That's prerogative of the council. But I don't think, Mr. DeVito said, if we're talking about a handbook, so I think we're in... We are going a little bit out of bounds there.
We're missing words. It was discussed whether Mr. DeVito was here or not is immaterial. Uh, the discussion was that the question that was brought to the table by council was that the code required the police department and salary be established by council, and that wasn't able to be provided. The discussion then led to that the personnel manual did away with that, and that's how the discussion of personnel manual is on the agenda.
Well, we made the discussion of personnel manual. Now we're asking into a whole different realm of changing and establishing an ordinance that changes how the police department works. By ordinance. Ms. Bones just made a motion to that effect.
State the motion.
Well, didn't make a motion, did you?
I believe I did.
She made a motion, and I seconded.
Okay.
And it does, and it does have to do with employee manual.
Just read it.
Now, it's up to the city council if they want to change the employee manual, they can. Obviously. We did it before by ordinance. And there's no sense in getting into argument what's right and what's wrong. Now, the council can change it if they want to. If y'all want to change how the police department's run, although I think it... My opinion, it's just me, and I'm just one of your members, I'm just one of you guys, I would feel a lot better if the chief of police was here to help participate in this discussion. Now, you seem to be wanting not to do that, but again, it's up to you.
I believe there's a motion on the table.
Conounce.
Ms. Bones? Motion to reestablish 2.48.01 from the older code book, and Mr. Raphael seconded
Any further discussion, Mr. DeVito?
Well, we can't do anything without a motion. I mean, without an ordinance. So, you know, if y'all want to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance, then that's what your motion should be. Because you're not going to vote, well, you'll do whatever you want, but as far as proper procedure, and as far as being fair to everybody, it requires a thoughtful approach. And as the mayor pro temly stated, it would be nice to have the chief of police here, since we are dealing with his department. So out of respect to the chief of police, I think we should take our time, have proper ordinance drafted, have the input of the chief of police. I'd like to have the mayor here, too. This is not something that we address lightly. So I caution council, which seems to have been in haste most of the evening to pass these things, that we take our time and be judicious about this. And that would require some ordinance to be drafted initially. We're not going to do it without a point of view that's...
Well, is this not an ordinance that's been codified?
That ordinance, according to the way I read the repeal clause, is no longer the law.
That's what I'm saying. I want to reestablish it.
Well, and I think Mr. DeVito's point is that to do that, proper procedure is to pass an ordinance. What your... Your motion is to just do this without an ordinance. You need to make, I think your motion, as Mr. DeVito was trying to point out, is to direct somebody to draft an ordinance, or somebody present an ordinance to you to do what you're requesting, but you can't just wipe the slate clean and start over tonight. Unless you're going to send me downstairs to try to type another one.
You can look at the ordinance and use it to reestablish.
It's the work probably is, is not exactly the same as what you would want to do, because it probably includes other provisions, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
This all gets back to a request that was made some seven months ago to have a workshop, which we're finally having on the 28th, is to sit down and establish some goals of where this council is going. Instead of loading up the shotgun with buckshot, each time we decide we want to shoot something, let's sit down and address those issues. And I think one of the big problems that we have, all due respect to the concerns of, to my right, is in requesting that we have reports from department heads. If we would go back and look at the code that requires certain departments to provide this report, provide this budget request, to provide this audit figure, to provide this, would all be taken care of. And this could be put on that workshop, and I agree with Mr. DeVito. We don't need to necessarily be charging, as someone that I know quite closely, charging hell with a water pistol. Let's sit down and let's, let's discuss those kind of things in a workshop that... Of where this council wants to go in the next 16, 17 months, instead of just blundering on.
Any other comment? I'm not sure what the motion, what the motion would...
Motion was to reestablish 2.48.01 from the older code, put it back in the book.
We have a second.
Mr. Raphael?
Do you want to amend the motion to...
I will rescind my motion.
You will rescind the second?
I would move to add this specific discussion to our workshop of the 28th.
Second.
Discussion of police department personnel.
Discussion of 2.48.01.
Police department personnel.
Yeah.
Okay. You have a motion, you have a second.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say if you have a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to discuss the alcohol beverage tax.
Second.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. Uh, I guess that's a clerk, the city attorney?
Want to take a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. You have... All those in favor, say if you have a second.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't care.
The city alcohol beverage tax cycle corresponds with the state. And during this process, within the last three weeks to a month, it became clear that there were some problems. And in talking with attorneys at the ABC, and also Mr. Weaver, who talked with an attorney at the ABC, we established three basic problems. The first is simple to solve. The second two may be more complex. The way the code is written, the supplemental tax is charged according to the Arkansas Code annotated 3-9-2 and 4. When you go and read that, it is very vague. Alcohol beverages. And so what has happened is that this has been interpreted differently by different people. What this actually means, what the first simple solution to the problem could be, instead of saying, well, to add not beer, not wine. There are people who are paying supplemental tax on beer and wine, and it's not the city's right to collect it. And so, if we kept this and just added not beer, not wine, that would solve layer one. That you would have to do. That's the easy part.
Change the city code?
To add that, to add that into the city code, wait.
The city code provides a reflection of tax by, um, on alcohol drinks served in bars, restaurants, other facilities in the city. And it prescribes, the state law, it allows that to be a 10% tax on mixed drinks. The code said, our code says alcohol, and the state says that's fine, but it's up to the various establishments to interpret that. But the clerk has came up with a problem, and some people interpret that in town different than other people. And several entities are paying wrong, it appears. Some are not paying at all. Others are paying possibly on beverages that are not included in that 10% tax. If you take a shot, or if you mix a martini, those are definitely taxable drinks. If you draw a beer from a tap, state doesn't believe that that's a... Their attorneys at the ABC, they don't believe that's necessarily a taxable event.
By the city?
By the city. Now, they, they have their own tax schemes that they can get at that. But on the 10% tax, there's actually four local taxes that can be collected. We're only under this, it appears, collecting under one of those four taxes. There is another taxes on beer that is served through a liquor store, there's one on hard liquor that is served through liquor stores, and there's private club legislation. But it gets complicated with that one. We're just looking at the mixed drink part. Right now, the ordinance that is, been on the books for a long time. Actually, according to the ABC, we were one of the first cities in the state to establish this type of tax. And it was done by a vote of the population here in Carroll County. But the intent is to collect 10% basically on hard liquor drinks served in a restaurant, bar, type set. But the wording, what we say in our ordinance is alcohol, seems to be confusing some people. And so, we're not getting our tax from some people, and we may be getting tax that we shouldn't necessarily get. From what the ABC says, the tax that we've taken is not necessarily... We're basing it on what they're telling us. Them being the establishment that's paying the tax. But we're not collecting, we're not collecting proper amount when we don't get any at all from some of these entities.
So what I'm hearing is that we're leaving it up to the establishments to interpret how they're paying?
Apparently, that's what had been done for the last couple of years, and that's not what should be being done. They should be, they should be... According to the ABC, they should have been getting better advice from the, their accountants or whoever's preparing the tax forms, whether they're doing it themselves or... And the ABC says that they are perfectly fine with advising individual bar owners, individual restaurants, individual accountants that may represent these type firms if they don't understand the law. But to make it a little easier, it may be better that we would amend our ordinance. But in the meantime, we have to figure out what to do with the several entities that have not been collecting, and possibly, I think, one entity that may have collected but doesn't even serve any kind of hard mixed drinks.
Right, so that's two and three.
That's two and three. So... But we have at least one entity that may have not collected in four, approximately four years, that should have been collected.
And is beginning to do so now.
And is beginning to do so now. There's, uh... Because it is a budgeting issue, from talking to the ABC's attorney, his suggestion was that this council has to decide what to do about that. Do we collect four years' worth of back taxes? And he says that's allowable, and that they actually will be the enforcement arm to do that if we can't rationalize it out with the local owners, uh, because if we notify them that the tax is not being paid, they'll come pick up the liquor license and stop liquor sales, the business. Nobody wants to do that. But this table has to be decided. In fact, the clerk can't decide how far back it's supposed to be collected. I can't decide that, the mayor can't decide that. It's a budgeting issue, so that's why we're bringing this problem that has developed over the last couple of weeks to you.
Mr. DeVito?
Something like this occurred, oh, probably 15 years ago with the federal government. There is a tax you pay to the feds for the privilege of serving alcohol. And the feds never enforced it, and then at a certain date, decided that they were going to enforce it, and tried to go back on all these clubs across the country who had not paid their tax. There was no mechanism when you got your license from the state to inform you that there was also a federal license that you had to acquire in order to serve alcohol. So push came to shove, and the Restaurant Association went to bed as, as our lobby against the federal government, and the federal government relented and did not go back and try to collect from those businesses that had not been informed of their duty to collect that tax. businesses that had not been informed of their duty to collect that tax, or to pay that tax, I'm sorry, because it was not on a drink or anything. So, I just don't see any possible way for us than to move from here on. And we're culpable in part. We have a responsibility. These businesses may have operated in good faith, although maybe not to the full extent of the law, you know, uh, in, in the case with the feds, they, they dropped the penalizing, they dropped the, the back payments and everything, and it was, it was just a wash. And we, we set up a way to inform people that when they did get a license, that there was a federal tax that you also had to pay too, so. It's just a horrible mess if we try to go backwards. I just don't see any way that we would even want to begin to get into that. So maybe the best thing to do is to reestablish the law and just move forward.
Is that, does that fall into the same category that, okay, that ten percent is supposed
to come to the city coffers, that are those same people not, or is it our concern paying their state sales tax? Are we, are we getting into the same thing as collecting CAPC tax as far as monitoring? And I, I agree that we ought to probably go forward from here, but, um...
What is your question?
The, the ten percent, we're talking about money out of our coffers, correct? And proper administration of this part of the code, correct?
I'm not...
You said ten percent. Did I not hear Mr. Berry say ten percent tax?
Up to ten percent.
Up to ten percent to be collected that would go to the city?
It is a ten percent. It is ten percent on every drink. If you sell a five dollar drink, it's fifty cents, it should go to the city.
Okay, so there's, there's the issue of clarifying what this says, so when a person comes and gets her alcohol license from the city, this is very clear. That's the easy part. The harder, the harder part is people who perhaps, this was true in two cases. There's some of every possibility out there. Two people had beer and wine licenses, later got mixed drink licenses. Their accountants didn't get it, or they didn't get it, they didn't understand that at that point, they needed to start collecting this. Now they are willing to do it, now that they understand what the law is. They're not fighting the concept, now that they understand what the law is. So, the second situation is, what do we do? They're, they're starting to collect the money now, and submit the taxes now, so that's a possible solution to the second problem. The third is, the city received recently two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fourteen cents on sales of wine and beer. This doesn't belong to the city. This is not, the city is to collect. So the third dilemma is, for those few people, and it's not a lot of money, it's probably less than five hundred dollars, that I'm sure. These people who have paid this money that we, that the city shouldn't be collecting, how, about making it right for those people? So those are the three.
Versus them?
That's a possibility. But again...
Mr. Weaver?
I would like to caution the council, I understand that you may want to waive any pass, but before you do that, the ABC said that these people are informed that they have to follow local law when they receive their license, and that there's some instruction. Now, how much instruction, that comes through the ABC, so I don't know. But they said that you need to be aware that you are the budgeting authority, and it's a little different than the situation with the feds. The feds weren't collecting from anybody. We've been collecting from the majority of the people in this town. They're paying that ten percent out of their pocket, because this tax doesn't, it allows for it to be passed on, but it doesn't require it. So several businesses in this town have paid that ten percent properly, and to allow other businesses now that have not been properly following the law for three or longer years, you may be coming under an allegation from those businesses that have been properly taking that ten percent out of their tail, that they've been unfairly treated, if you waive the collection of these past taxes.
And the other two, it's not, while I understand that people have paid the taxes, I have been involved with paying property tax to the county on property that I don't own, and they didn't give me back any money. So anyway.
ABC said they don't refund money either.
Yeah. There's no refund, so if you pay them for whatever reason. Mr. DeVito?
Well, we have a budget line in revenues called Taxes Beverage, and for six months, we're right at close to fifty percent. My, my question would be, apparently somewhere along the line, we have documentation that shows that we're estimating we're going to collect around ninety-five thousand dollars in beverage tax. So, other than what I'm seeing or hearing from the city clerk, as far as clarifying, I think I heard the definition of alcohol, for the one, the one step you were talking about beer and wine and that, uh, I, I, I would like to see us just press on and, you know, it's, unless we're the enforcement arm also, that, you know, the city attorney said that ABC or whoever, uh, doesn't go back and refund money, I don't think we should be either. And if it's our job to enforce the collection, you know, we've, we've attempted to do it in our budgetary process, but that seems to be as far as, I mean, we, we have numbers that match what we're thinking we're collecting, so if, if not, then maybe we need to have a higher budget and enforcement, enforceable part of the code, if it's not. But I don't think we ought to go back and say, well, we're gonna forgive you, and we're gonna start this day forward, because I think we'd open a whole can of worms.
It's open. But those last two elements, what to do about the payments that the city needed to not be collecting, and what to do about the money that was to be paid but wasn't, those are the two more difficult things.
I'd, I'd like to, without putting anybody on the spot, I'd like to defer that question and scenario to Mr. DeVito and say, okay, if you were faced with that, how are we, how are we looking at as far as enforceability from the city's standpoint? And are, are we getting to the point like collecting CAPC tax and having to have almost a separate enforcement arm, like we do for that? People aren't making the payments.
Mr. DeVito?
The ABC is the first one.
My first question is, are we able to determine that? That people have inadvertently paid monies that they might not be obligated to?
I know two for sure.
Did, did they notify you, or did you find it on your own?
I found it on my own.
Okay. Are you able to find the rest of them?
Some will be the honor system, and this is what I mean by that. There, you've seen the state tax form, and you see that the alcohol, the liquor has a different amount than the beer and wine does when you do that monthly report.
Yes.
The accountants, I called several accountants to ask them how they handle this. Those who did their research thoroughly, and were paying attention to what their clients were doing, have been paying the ten percent on the liquor. There is one accountant, when his client got a mixed drink license, and he fills those reports out every month, did not begin to collect, had his client paid on that ten percent and raised his prices. So there's, so some of it, okay, those monthly reports from the state, we don't have the right to see those monthly reports. There's actually been a determination that it is not appropriate for us to see them. So some of this is going to be on good faith. There's one entity, and that, that's the first piece of paper I held up, and know that that's all they served at that event, was beer and wine, there was not any liquor. So, yes, we know some, yes, we'll be on some, some will be on good faith.
You only were able to determine that by your due diligence to call accountants. You can't go into your spreadsheets and your accounting and, and determine by that who is inadvertently paid, so there's been no identifiable scientific accounting method for the city to determine that anybody overpaid.
We're underpaid.
Actually, underpaid there is.
There is.
Underpaid, we have, by the licensing, we know what their license through the ABC to serve. And so if they have a mixed drink license, they're supposed to be paying a tax or filing a form with us, and there are businesses in town that are not doing that.
Whose, whose requirement is it to enforce that? What, what arm of city government?
The ABC says that that is, as far as the city government, the ABC says it's the city. They don't say whether that should be coming from the clerk, or it should be coming from the police department, but they, they suggest the city make an effort to collect it. But if the city finds that they're not, and they said it's a routine basis out of cities like Hot Springs and other places that do collect the same tax, that if they find that they've got a business that won't comply, you simply notify the ABC. The ABC immediately, ex parte, without any litigation, sends and gets their license, and stops that business from selling until that business works it out with the city. So they become the enforcement arm.
Yeah, the police call the ABC.
Do we have an, an ordinance in place, or the code in place, that allows us to just say, okay, let's, from this day forward, start doing that?
Doing what?
What do you say? Notify the ABC that...
ABC says that's state law and reg. And they quoted me the reg, that it comes from their regulations.
We don't need an ordinance for that, that's their responsibility, that's their responsibility to do. Uh, I just really can't envision any way we can go backwards and, and try and untangle this. Uh, you know, there's, there's no accounting on our part that shows, and with all due respect to everybody that collects taxes, on good faith? Uh, maybe not.
And we budget in good faith, based on that good faith collection?
When I contacted restaurants, they were, I have been very surprised at the gracious response. Only one lady broke down in tears. Everybody else has been...
Well, that, that's because the big hammer is the ABC. I mean, you know, they can pull your license in a heartbeat if your, the link went on your taxes, and that's a big hammer to a restaurant or a bar, uh, you know, so I...
Well, and we also have the same option. We can pull their, we do not have to, we can pull a license, we don't have to issue a license. Every year, they come up for renewal. And on Sunday, we will know when they submit a renewal, that it's, they're serving alcoholic beverages at that point. When you issue a business license, renew.
They're not separated. It used to be that there was beer and wine and mixed drink.
Well, but, but it's still alcoholic beverages, though, right?
The license the city issues, issues is one license for alcoholic beverages from no alcohol to...
So that's, that's a sep, I mean, that gets back into separation of beer and wine, but we do have the enforcement. I mean, if we're, if they're not paying a tax, then we can pull their license too.
We have a list, or the ABC has a list, of who's serving hard liquor in the city. Who has permits to do that?
Yeah, I mean, when they, when they fill out this application, uh, City of Eureka Springs, they, they fill out whether they're serving hard liquor or not.
Well, I think we should start with a letter to all the bars, restaurants in the city that do, explaining their responsibility, and see what comes back.
Actually, by going to them one, one at a time and sitting down, the response has been really good. But a letter can help. I tried to bring the supporting paperwork to show them why.
So what does the council wish to do on the people? We have three issues. One is, is, and from what I'm hearing, is we can't still charge the ten percent on beer and wine if we wanted to.
No.
No.
No. There's a separate tax that can be imposed on the package sales, but that's a different rate and a different type of tax.
So we need to add the beer and wine in that one clause?
Not beer, not wine.
Not beer, not wine.
Right. And the other one is, do we want to, uh, collect the back taxes?
What was the city attorney's recommendation again?
My recommendation is you need to consider very closely not collecting that, if that's your choice, because you may be, well, you're taking dollars that should have went to the city, away from the city, and you could be charged in an action for that, one. You also may have an action brought by the other entities that have been collecting and paying tax for unfairly treating them, if you waive it for the ones that have been violating the law. There is a maximum in the law that you are presumed to know the law. And many of the businesses in town know the law and have been paying the tax. And the ones that have not, presumably, if their drinks are the same price, are putting that ten percent into their business, rather than paying it into the city where it belongs. And therefore, by not collecting the tax, you are subsidizing the businesses if you waive it, which is illegal, to subsidize a private business.
Counter to that, and this is what I learned in conversation, talking with these people, the general response to paying back is, had we understood that we were to have collected this, we would have been happy to do that. We didn't charge the tax, we didn't collect the money, and if the city forces us to pay money that we don't collect, and we are talking about thousands and thousands of dollars, it can cripple those businesses and they will close. Because they didn't collect it, so they didn't pay it, and if we force them to pay the city something they didn't collect, then they'll close.
They're saying they didn't collect.
The law actually isn't...
For those two entities, that is really absolutely the truth.
The law actually doesn't say they collected from, it says they can pass it on to their customer. The tax is the responsibility of the business itself, according to the ABC, and according to the way the state statute is written. And if they want to pass that on, they have that ability.
Mr. DeVito? For a total understanding one last time, do we have the mechanism in place that, you know, I can, I can see walking into a local establishment, and if that individual elects not to charge me a tax on my drink, therefore not paying a tax to anyone, that's, that's doing business. But I just want to make sure we have something in place that...